Would be they do an actual subdivision, because I don't think we can show where it was ever merged, but.
How much does that, is there a big cost associated with that?
There's some cost because I think you either need survey, yeah, you probably need surveys. And that, you know, but what I would suggest is. I will come in and take the time to go through how I would do it if I was in Hanover. I would take all the tax maps going back to whenever the thirties or forties or before.
Eighteen hundreds.
Well, Hanover had some of those. And you show the parcels and then you look for anything in writing or you go up to the county registry and see if there was ever a time when it became one parcel instead of two and see if.
Yeah.
That may have been to the benefit of those homeowners, in which case they're not subject to the pass.
And this one's not as cut and dry as that.
Yeah.
Because there were other laws involved.
Well, that's why I'm confused.
The one across the road, well, yeah, and when David and I looked at it together, we kind of.
So I.
Found some of that.
Yep, and when I did what I could on the computer. I don't have access to the registry, I have to pay for that now. You guys have, and the county, so. I'm trying from original means and stuff, but this is.
Do you have a picket out which one's any good?
Well, I got, that first wasn't great, and so I'm gonna do it again with the different sound level. So, good morning, it's nice to see you.
I know you looked way back in the maps and. I have to look back and see.
This is eighteen.
Yeah, I have to look back.
Good morning, sir.
It's corresponding with your lovely wife last night.
Yeah. We gotta move meeting on, don't want anybody to talk too much.
Okay, yes, sir.
They just ceased to bug.
Well, we can move it along a little bit.
Move what along?
Meeting.
Oh, I said we're on.
Who are you?
But we're on.
I mean the Zoom, we're on the Zoom. No, I wasn't telling you to move it along, G B.
Well, Ben, Ben was.
Oh.
No big lesson.
You just walked in the door.
Yeah, didn't you notice?
I did notice.
He's a Harley guy on the parking lot. It's why I don't come down to town, everybody wants to chat with me.
Oh, I see.
I see, and today is the thirtieth of May and ten oh two. I will open this, this meeting, I can see it's gonna be good.
Sarah, we told you it was gonna be wild.
So, um, do we have, we have one public, welcome Phil.
I think Rich is here somewhere.
And Rich is here, yes, he's almost become a member.
He says his wife won't let him.
Oh, she's a smart woman.
And we have, I haven't come on yet, we have Jan.
Okay.
And we have James Graham.
Okay, oh, we know why they're on. Um, and we have Phil and Rich, okay, so. Do either Phil or Rich have any public comments at this point?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
There's just been money put back from this, uh, federal grants into the state program to study workforce housing and zoning. And I don't know if the board is aware of that or that's something that, you know, could get information about and take a look at, but, um, there's something like twenty-nine million dollars just put back into the state coffers for that. And it's the kind of thing that requires coordination, you know, it's a, it's a planning board and, uh, it's not something that a small group can do, the town has to sort of be behind it, but.
Yes, probably the Upper Valley Lakes, I don't know, the regional planning, um, but we can certainly reach out and see federal grants, we usually get.
I'll shoot, I, I downloaded the information, I'll shoot it to Nina.
That'd be awesome, thank you, thank you.
I did have a comment, I know you're gonna talk about the, uh, the Live Foundation application to use the common. Maybe from that could come an outline or guidelines about how the normal way to use the common is, and that would say, yes, if you do these things and this is how you park and this is what you do, you then have a document to show other groups and say, so, these are the rules. Uh, if you say, yeah, 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 that's fine. You don't have to track Sean down and talk to Sean about a parking plan, you don't have to do any of this stuff. It's just, oh, oh, that's all you wanna do? I mean, or if what you wanna do fits in these rules, you're all set, so. That's something to think about as, as we go forward because.
We have spent many meetings trying to refine the information that goes out to people, trying to refine the guidelines for, you need to provide the following and da, 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 so.
Maybe that's, maybe that's in hand and I've just never seen it, so.
It, it is helpful if people read that stuff and fill out the applications of following the guidelines. I agree with you, I mean.
Perfect, okay.
But we have kind of done that.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, the only thing it doesn't have in there is if they end up saying that the one-way and some parking on the back side of the common is the way to go, then we can have that.
We can add that, if you change it, we're talking about that.
Having that as just one package.
Yep.
That would be helpful, thank you, that's all I need.
We do have a package presently, doesn't mean it can't be made better.
Perfect.
Um, I'm gonna cha, I'm gonna jump to near to the end of the agenda.
Do we have any public comments from any of the.
Thank you. We have Jan, Jan and James. I'm presuming you guys are here for the CPCNH conversation?
Yes, that's, that's why, thanks.
Okay, Jan, do you have something different?
I was, I was here, actually, I wanted to bring up the same issue that Phil brought up, um, which is about the state grants, uh, and I, um, just wanna point out that it doesn't look like they're being made, it looks like they're being granted to towns rather than regional entities.
Okay.
So, um, just wanna highlight that. Um, might be some, a, a great thing for some work that we really need to have done with updating some of the zoning.
Okay, thank you. Then, now we will jump to the end of the agenda, we have a demerger request. I am going to push this off to our next meeting. I understand in our packet today we have additional information that we didn't have earlier, and I will also say that I will come in and sit down with David and the, as many materials going back as far as we can find them to try and figure out whether or not this request qualifies under the state law about demergering. So, we can take that off this time's agenda, hopefully see it either at the next meeting or the meeting after.
Okay.
Okay?
Just to be clear, that's David Robbins.
Yes. You don't wanna come in and sit down with me and look at all the maps? So, we're, yes, that's our planning and zoning administrator. All right. Then, since we have, as you guys know, I love to move things around. Community Power Coalition. We have heard, I believe, from our attorney who has talked with the CPCNH folks, we've heard from Primex. Are we, um, comfortable going forward with this?
I, I am, I, Joe Driscoll had a bunch of, had, had a number of open questions that he had on reading the agreement that hadn't been answered, he now has reached out to folks at CPCNH and gotten answers to those questions. I, I emailed him after he got those answers and just got him to confirm for us that, uh, he feels that the Town of Lime is not being treated unfairly or any differently than any other participant in the, in the arrangement and that none of the, none of the things that he saw in the agreement or that, that he had questions about operate to the specific detriment of Lime. So he, you know, based on that, I think I'm comfortable going forward and signing the agreement.
Okay. David, oh, David, Ben?
Yeah, I'm fine.
You're fine with that? Well, I will make a motion that we go forward and sign the agreement and move it along.
Second?
Thank you, all those in.
Ben on?
David on?
Judy, I. James Graham, did you want to have any comment at this point?
Uh, only to say thank you, um, I appreciate you guys, uh, you know, paying attention to this and moving it along and, you know, there's gonna be more coming.
Okay.
Just, I would just say, you know, I think there's a, uh, we, we have to kind of work out a structure of how, you know, we're gonna manage this on our end.
That is right.
You know? Yeah.
Yeah, James, um, what is the, uh, I know that there was, now, now CPCNH has to consider all of these towns that have asked to opt in and do you have any kind of a sense about what the timeline is likely to be on this process going forward?
I think they're, they're talking about the next, um, you know, onboarding or whatever, it, as being in September or October. And as, you know, when, when we'll actually come online. Um, and between now and then, my understanding is that they'll, uh, they'll have, uh, information that's gonna go out to customers explaining, you know, everything that's, that's gonna happen in terms of how they can opt out. And of course, what the rates will be, so, um, I'll be in touch with, uh, Andrew Hatch and, uh, you know, just to keep facilitating this going forward.
Thank you very much. Anything further?
No.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, James.
So, we will be.
There's one signature line.
Okay, well.
So, you guys should either move for you or just squish your names in there.
Okay.
I'll move that, uh.
Judy's on it.
We have Judy's on on behalf of this elect board.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Ben on?
Okay.
Seems to be a signage.
You have to watch these too, they do that a lot. All right, um.
Yeah, but she, she writes five names down that she write, signs, so she effectively signs her all.
All right, you guys, you must be channeling my brother, he used to give me all kinds of grief. All right, going back, starting over, we have minutes from May sixteen and May twenty-two.
I'll move them.
Gina, you got that one comment, was that certainly?
I sent it out to them, yeah.
Yep.
I, I think that was accurate, right, it wasn't.
The, the.
The change I made, it was inaccurate, an inaccurate description before that.
I didn't see the change I made, I just sent it to them because I didn't have time to look at it, but. It, was it the highlighted area?
I think it was the highlighted area, yes.
Yes, I did see that, that wasn't accurate. Takeaway.
Yep.
Yes, I don't even know how that got in.
I don't, I don't either, and that's why I highlighted it, because I didn't remember that conversation.
Yeah, it wasn't.
It didn't apply, so I'll second for the minutes, all those in favors, I.
Ben on?
Judy, I. And that's two sets of minutes from the sixteenth and the twenty-second. Boy, we've been busy guys. Okay, and we have a manifest. And it came early enough, I actually got to look in the head, thank you. And it is in the amount of, it looks like it is forty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and twelve whole cents.
That's exactly correct.
Forty-four, two, six, six.
There was some, one line there about fire truck repair. What part, was that on the new fire truck?
Fire truck repair.
I thought it was a fire truck.
It was a big amount for the highway truck repair.
Oh, I saw that, but I thought I saw the fire truck.
Highway.
They had a couple of things.
Police, highway. I didn't catch that. I didn't, I thought truck services, highway.
Yeah, I was, please, and I'm reading it on my iPhone.
Well, there you go.
Gina, you know I had a couple of questions about items that turned out to be overseer of the public welfare. Is there any way when reviewing the manifest for me to identify those kind of things in advance? Or is it just every time one of those comes up, we just pay whoever the, that particular specific vendor is in that case and.
Well, you guys don't have a choice, you can't say no.
No, I know, but I just wanna be able to know it, I mean, you know, you see a payment to something that looks odd that doesn't have anything to do with normal town business, and so it's natural to question that. I'm wondering if there's a way when I'm looking at the manifest for me to know that that's what those kind of things are or no.
Um, not on the manifest, now, if I send you the original, the document I used to send you to, it shows what account number it goes to.
Yeah.
And you would know.
But that's, all right, so I'll just ask when I see something.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't see.
There was one page that. Really had a hard night, uh, practice on the Connecticut.
Yeah, there was something on, on the Connecticut, there was another for, there were a couple of payments to Mascoma Bank for something that sort of didn't.
Right, those are overseer of welfare.
It was on page six, I think.
Wow.
Boy, we're doing two for the job, but you always, I move them.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, David, all those in favor say aye.
Ben on?
David on it.
And Judy, I.
Thank you for the questions, though, I like that, that means you're looking.
No, I read it, I read it every week. See where the money's going.
Yeah.
It's all goes to school.
Yeah, it's mostly the.
Oh, then let me, um.
They got that hundred thousand dollar front door.
Email to Catherine Greenlink about a couple of issues.
Okay.
Including the, uh, trees going into the power lines, so.
Oh, good, okay, so we'll add that to the end. Ben?
Yeah, Gina, do you know what happened on that, uh, that one residence where they didn't want to allow or they weren't responsive to?
That's it.
He's gonna update us.
We know, you, you don't know where, where.
Yeah, I know what's going on, so I'll, I'll, and, you know, give everybody an online.
Okay, thank you, so, we have received a copy of the petition. I believe it's coming from the Friends of Post Pond. I believe it's going to the state, so I'm not sure that we need to take any action.
You're just getting it because you're a property abuser.
And it's about.
Property, the, the abutting is the pond itself.
The pond itself.
We own shoreline.
You own land, right, that abuts that, yeah.
Yeah, that's correct, rather than state.
State kinda has to handle it, because pond is a state, it's a great pond.
I was reading this morning that there's legislative developments going on with respect to that question about wakeboarding and what the distance is and.
That's what this whole has to do with.
So, what, what is it exactly that, uh, that's the petition here, what do they want?
They don't want water skiing.
Waitboarding, right, I know, I know, but it's not just that, it, it's.
It's a no-bleed zone.
It's not a flat prohibition, it's a question of how far from the shoreline you allow that sort of activity.
And pond's small enough, you know, a lot.
Yeah, yeah, well, exactly, so, but do you know what in particular, uh, Mayor, uh, Sue McKenzie's group is petitioning for, do they want like a five-hundred-foot barrier or three-hundred?
No, they're just part of this whole big petition that is part of that.
That's going to the state.
They don't have, right, right.
Yeah, so, um, I know in the past, a few years ago, people were concerned because someone was water skiing on the pond and it created big waves and it's hard for any nesting booms or other nesting things, but.
Heaven forbid somebody having fun out there.
It's a different kind of.
Tournament day.
That's just how some people feel, David.
Anyway.
Right, I had a lot more that went on in the past.
Yeah.
Even with one of that.
So, anyway, I don't know. They, this just says, this letter is to inform you, this going to us, of their intent, Friends of Post Pond, to petition the state.
And it doesn't say what they're petitioning the state to.
For, for this.
But it will be filed by tomorrow. And, um, it's proposing to restrict a body of water, which is Post Pond.
Oh, and I have one other thing.
But you guys don't have to follow it or anything.
Right, okay.
While I remember, I, I spoke to, oh crap, I almost forget his name, Vane's son-in-law.
Rob.
Rob.
Rob Meyer.
About going out and looking at riverbanks again. Uh, he said we could use one of it, he has two on two boats, we could use one of them anytime we wanted. As long as somebody could navigate.
I can drive a boat.
I know you can.
I have my boating license.
I have a boating license, but.
You do, good.
I have a boat in the river.
I'm not sure I wanna drive the boat.
I have a boat in the river.
I could do that.
Well, either way, but we need to take multiple people, but so.
Great.
Yeah.
And so.
And Phil is just on here.
Right, yeah.
I mean, it's sitting there.
What was his name, he used to take us out.
Oh, yes.
Wayne.
Wayne Bates, Wayne Bates used to take us out.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, he passed away.
Yep.
But we, we're, we're overdoing looking at those places.
Yes, you are.
Okay, so we need to schedule that up.
Part of being a select, so.
Do you have a pontoon boat?
Get a boat ride.
Get a boat ride.
Do you have a pontoon boat?
Yeah.
Where are you located on the river?
Uh, I'm only half south of the bridge that's never gonna get fixed. Used to be Sylvia Reed's house, or exactly north of the one that's gonna drive my taxes up ferociously, the two, six, seven, two million seven house or something.
Which house is?
It's down New Hanover, just in.
It's down on the south end.
South end.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know which one's closer, we got, there's some up, up on the north, north of, the North River Road. There's that street bank and then there's the.
That's the way we went when we went.
There's some on North River Road below that.
Right.
But then, then we could relook it.
Yep.
But we could take care of this problem and take care of it, but it's still worth looking at.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sounds like a plan.
So, one or the other, we gotta, we gotta do that.
Thank you, Phil. Okay, we have a tax anticipation note in the amount of three-point-eight million dollars at a whopping six-point-four-five percent interest.
Well, they're not gonna pay the interest directly.
Um, we only pay for what we use, which is nice, and the tax anticipation note, for anyone that doesn't know, is, um, because we only collect taxes once a year.
We do, it's all.
We get to mid to late summer and the funds are pretty sketchy, they're getting low, and we borrow what we need to make it through till we get our next taxes paid. For anyone that's interested, some of us think we should do taxes twice a year, which would alleviate some of this problem, it does make more work and, uh, costs a little more, but I think in terms of running the TAM and in terms of individuals being able to budget, it could be helpful, but.
You know what would be nice to see in thinking about that question is a, a, a chart that shows what we've actually paid in tax anticipation note interest over the last three or four years, you know, if.
That's easy for me to do.
If it's, you know, six, seven hundred dollars a year, sort of, who cares?
Absolutely.
If it's, if it's.
It's thousands.
Fifteen, twenty, thirty thousand dollars a year, then that's more.
Yeah, yeah, it used to be less than ten thousand, now it's over twenty, so.
And is that attributable to increased borrowing or increased interest rates or both?
Both, but it's mostly contributed to the fact that we've had to borrow more, um, earlier, because we don't, even if you borrow like three-point-eight, it's not based on that whole amount. If I use, or if we use a million of it between now and July, that's the only thing we get taxed on. So, I mean, the interest, I mean, tax, my brain's just going to tax, so it's, you know, it's not, it's not on the margin.
I, I move this.
Thank you, Ben, I was about to say, just, do you wanna second that?
Lots of ways to sign.
Yes, Rich.
Would you say the numbers again, three-point-six million at what percentage?
Three-point-eight million.
Hey.
At six-point-four-five percent.
Well, but that's not right, I'm, well, it's right, but it's not.
That's the entry is right.
That, that's the amount that we would be entitled to borrow, but we don't necessarily draw that.
Yes, yes, I said, I understand completely, thank you.
Yeah, last year we borrowed six point, I can't, six, three-point-five, and we used just barely over three million, so.
Okay, well, please.
But this year we have more road stuff, so.
Yeah, compared to the two-point-six of the school is borrowing for thirty years, this is chicken.
Uh-huh, okay.
Okay, and so, all those in favor of the TAM, say aye.
Ben on?
David on?
Judy, I, that is approved.
Are we supposed to initial this page, Gina?
We're supposed to initial. Wherever it's marked in orange, yes, sir, where there's changes, you can do that after if you want, if it's too.
Okay.
It's kind of a pain, because we have to make changes to it.
All right, thank you. Now comes the fun stuff. CCL leases is a tenant of the Town of Lime at the Academy Building. Okay, I have noticed, they pay four-thousand-eight-hundred dollars a year.
Four-thousand-six-hundred dollars, sorry, I put that wrong.
Wow.
Yeah, I'm sorry, now that I'm looking at the lease.
And, well then, my numbers are gonna be all wrong.
Oh, no.
They have not had an increase since they began using the Academy Building. And, um, I would suggest either a three percent increase or an eight percent increase, since they've never had one. The three percent increase, based on the number I had, would have been a hundred and forty-four dollars. The eight percent would be an additional three-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. They should have an increase, um, they are using the building one more.
Move it, bro.
Can you tell me what these guys?
CCL?
Yeah.
Is the community care of Lime, and they have office hours, they have like teas, but they also have a lot of outreach.
Well, but they're doing nonprofit stuff, right, they're helping Lime residents.
Yes.
So. They're a nonprofit.
In some ways you might say no need to be charging these guys full market rent maybe because.
Well, I don't think that's full market rent, but.
Forty, forty-six hundred for the whole year?
Yeah.
That's a steal.
It's not, but it's, um, yeah, so you would, you would advocate to leave it at forty-six?
I don't feel strongly, but it, it, it seems to be that if what they're doing is sort of to the benefit of the town anyways, it's funny to be charging them more money.
I, I, I think it was based on, um, the expenses to operate while they were there, so.
Oh, okay, so that we're not going out of target.
It's sort of part of the break even.
Yeah.
And that's what I went, oh, shoot about, because I forgot to look that up.
Yeah.
Why don't we do that again, why don't we have Gina?
Look that up again.
Let's see, yeah, so that we're, we're kind of breaking even and.
Okay, Phil?
Just wanted to mention, it's a five-oh-one-C-three, but it's a five-oh-one-C-three with an over two-hundred-thousand-dollar-a-year budget. So, it's not like a couple hundred bucks is likely to break them.
Okay, thank you.
Um, one thing I noticed about these leases, when I was looking at the residential lease that we have, there's a provision in there that I kind of like in section eight, the use of premises. Where it says the premises are to be used exclusively for blah, blah, blah. Tenants shall not do or permit anything to be done on leased premises that will in, in any way interfere with the rights of other tenants, occupants or neighbors, or to injure or annoy such persons, tenants shall not allow the premises to be used for any improper, unlawful, or objectionable purpose. I really like that language.
Yep.
And, and when I was looking at this Lime Center Academy now, I, I realize the, 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 the CCL is unlikely to be doing any of those things, but I still think it's maybe a good idea to have a provision like that in a lease that says, you know, you won't be, if you're smoking crack or something.
Or mugging the neighbors, or, you know, right, exactly.
I think we could probably add that, um, so it looks like we're not ready to.
Yeah, I'll do it next time.
Well, you can, you, you, you can decide you're doing these, I can add in the things.
Yeah, but we also wanted some more information on the, on the CCL, we wanted to see what the costs were, um.
Yeah, to set the meds on it, we need to know what the.
Okay, but, but at least, at least the, um, the Pike House. Okay, but, but at least, at least the, um, the Pike House one, you could.
Yeah, we can move to that one next.
You say, yes, and, okay.
Okay, we're doing, that's coming up next, Dina, that's okay.
He brought it up, so, you know, it's on my brain.
Yeah, yes, I like that, that phraseology as well, and it, uh, some year might come in handy. Um, okay, so CCL, we're gonna get more information, and we're gonna do that next meeting. And then, since we're right here, we've got the, um, the rental lease agreement between Lime and our tenant, the Pike House, which is the little antique house right over here. And we agreed that we were going to raise that rent. And I think that we decided that that had not been raised, and it was quite less than market rate. So I believe this is now one thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents a month.
And that reflects the raise we, the increase.
A hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents increase, which was ten percent.
Ten percent is what we asked.
Yeah, because it hadn't been raised in two years.
In two years, and we had seventeen percent inflation since January.
Yep.
Yep.
So, are we in accord with the CCL lease and ready to sign that and move forward?
I'll move it, hold a second.
Thank you, David, thank you, Ben, all those in favor say aye.
David aye.
Ben aye.
And Judy aye, okay, that's approved. And you caught the date changes, which I had seen before.
Did, I hope.
And there was another place, okay, and the term now, okay, so the term is twelve months commencing July one, this is item two, and terminating on June thirty. So if you wanna go up to that heading and change that to, instead of May one, July one.
See, I'm gonna change it, okay. Yeah, that's not on your signature page, though, so.
And ending on June thirty. Which we had negotiated with her because she has a child in school.
Right.
Yes, sir, sorry.
Would you say the, uh, the, either the, the rent, the monthly rent, the new rent for that Pike House, please?
The new rent is one thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents a month.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. And I believe these leases are public, so if someone wanted to see all the details, they could. And the increase is a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents a month. For anyone that's interested. Come on, come on, man, throw me a piece of paper. All right, yeah, just.
Tam.
Thank you. CCL, Pike House, what's next? Lime Foundation. Oh, first I'm gonna pop to this, the state of Vermont withholding changes for the Vermont childcare contribution. The town has two employees who live in Vermont. I read a gazillion things online, took me like four hours. I did not have a good day on Tuesday, I sat at my computer all day long. And, um, this morning, I was able to reach out to the helpline for the Department of Taxes. And I talked to a very nice lady, and I was as jovial as I could be. And said, this is a very small town in New Hampshire, we have two Vermont employees working here. Really, does Lime need to contribute to the CCC tax? By withholding from their wages or by the town paying this? And she said, oh, no, you are not subject to that.
Well, pat you on the back for that one.
This was a lady named.
Get it in writing.
Not subject to the tax.
And, but, no, but who?
And we don't have to do.
No, no, I got the message, but, but, but who was giving it?
A lady that worked at the Vermont Department of Taxes.
All right, so.
The Taxpayer Services. And you go to the Tax Tithes number three, and then you go to number one payroll withholding.
I, it's funny that you got that answer, because that was my, my, it's like.
We're all thinking that.
I, I was thinking, why would we be subject to this, we're not in Vermont, that, that's not, shouldn't be our problem.
No.
Is it just our with, our withholding service?
Our payroll, they sent it to us, telling us we are.
Yeah, the payroll service wants to do this, because they're used to their.
Well, no, the state of Vermont sent us this form saying, you have to do this.
Right.
I asked our payroll, they said, yes, you have to do this, so.
And.
I hope this lady she talked to is correct.
Well, we'll find out.
That's all I can say.
As far as we're concerned, they override all of them.
Get it in writing, like he'll say.
Document that somewhere.
Okay, I.
Well, I mean, that is the case, that when you get oral advice from these services generally, you're legally entitled to rely on.
Oh, you asked for it. Yep, well, I can follow up if you would know.
There's an email address, I can shoot him an email.
Just follow up with the email.
There's an email address right here.
Okay, okay. That'd be great.
Yeah.
Dina will follow up.
The email should say something like, we spoke to.
Mary.
We spoke to Mary, and you're duh 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 duh, and she advised us that it's a small town in the state of Andrew, we're not liable for this tax. Can you please confirm that our advice is correct, so.
Yeah, I mean.
I can do that.
I, it seemed to me, yeah, we could withhold, but what the information that we got said was that we have to pay a percentage of the withholding, the town.
Right.
And I'm thinking, really? You know, when somebody has their wages garnered, the town doesn't contribute to that, so it.
I even asked our payroll company, what are all your other, uh, what are all your other towns doing? They said they're paying it, they're paying the forty point forty-four, and I'm like, okay. So I'll be calling them and saying, wait, you better check this out.
Yep, okay, well, all right. Bugaboo to be continued.
Nice work, Karen.
Thank you. Well, it made me really, really ugly. I've got my, my independent hat on, you know, my libertarian bent came out.
Well, your employees, the two Vermont employees aren't real thrilled either.
No, they're not. So Lime Foundation, use of the common. Is this, we've got, mostly Jordan and Dina look at these applications. And they see, you know, that Sean has looked at the parking, and that the use is appropriate. And in this case, there's a lot of activity being proposed, and so they thought that maybe the board should look at the application and see how we felt, and if it meant, that it, if it met the management and use policy. So.
Um, I think Jordan and my, you know, questions really involved around, um, yes, they're putting this on for the community, which is a great thing, but because they're going to have things being sold there, like food, you know? And one of the things is you're not supposed to have commercial things, and, and commercial entities are not supposed to be making money. So you guys would need to make a special exception for this. Um, and the amount of people, you know, we all, we also thought, well, it's really way bigger than just the norm little event, so. I know that, that Mr. Cafrey has met with Sean already. And Sean seems to be okay with their plan.
Lime Common has survived bigger events than that.
Yeah, totally.
And rowdy events.
We just don't want it, we don't, I, I don't think it's a fair place to put Jordan and I to say yes to something.
Did one, us.
Of this magnitude.
No, it's fine for it to come to its slut work.
Right, of this magnitude, right.
But I mean, the, the Lime Common, over the years, has been used for Lime Fair, Lime Fair was rowdy drinking.
Rowdy, lots of people driving all over the common.
Yeah, the girl shows, all line area.
Girl shows.
Girlly shows.
Do we get that back?
Reinstitute it?
I remember all those things, Ferris wheels and.
Beer tents.
Oh, they used to do that in all the towns around here.
Of course they did.
Lebanon used to have a huge big fair on their common.
It's called liability insurance, now.
I know, it's too bad.
The biggest problem was those, what do they call the people that fix all their rides?
Yes.
They would be.
Rustabouts.
Well, they, they stole batteries all over town. People's cars got new batteries to replace the old batteries on their equipment.
All right, I'll, I'll move that we approve this.
Okay.
Hold a second.
Okay, and, David, thank you, and Ben, thank you, and all those in favor?
Ben aye.
David aye.
And Judy aye, and I would just like to make a comment that I'm really tickled to see this kind of a use. Let's hope it goes off without a hitch. And we did talk, and I'm not sure that Sean has decided yet, about a one-day closure of the road at the back of the common.
I think we should do that.
And do one lane with traffic and the other lane.
We should just, we should just do it.
Park the food trucks, park the vendor cars.
I, I agree with Ben that that seems like a good idea to me, but I would say, I would defer to Sean and let him decide.
Well, I think he wants to.
Oh, if he wants to do it, then I.
I see a question about this.
He is doing, that's the plan for, for this event.
For this one.
Okay.
That's correct, it's like a trial.
Yep, great.
No, I don't think I misread it, Sean, over the years.
No, but, but he also, uh, there was, there's a little glitch with the state.
Yeah, we have to.
That's what's holding us up.
What's there?
State of Hampshire.
I thought, I thought they turned everything over here.
They did, but where, but where our road now comes out onto their road.
Where our.
And what direction, and how, you know, there's all that stuff.
Sean will take care of it.
He'll take care of it, he'll work it out.
That would be, that would be really, really great, uh, for.
It's only gonna happen one day, the state won't even know that.
No, 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 this, no, it's not that, Ben. Boy, he's been a real smarty, smarty today. It's not this one event, it's making it a one-way and all that stuff.
Yep, for the one event, I think he said he could easily do it.
Yep.
And then considering maybe going forward with it.
Yes.
Okay.
Trying it out.
Um, gosh, we're having so much fun, I'm not really sure what's going on. All right, we have a number of individuals that have been recommended for reappointment as forest fire wardens or deputy forest fire wardens. I read this list, it's quite extensive.
Yep.
We have Albert Balich, Daniel Bren- Breton, Jesse Hudding, Kevin Lehey, Michael Monday.
They are.
Huh?
They are.
Yes, I, I know that. They have a Y in the spelling, but an R in the pronunciation. Michael Monday, Chuck Reagan, Henry Stokes, Joseph.
He's not here.
He's gone.
That, that's another one.
Scott Allen Thompson is about to know, Don Voat, and Ernst Lang.
I move it, hold a second.
Okay.
Ben aye. David aye.
Now, listen, you two.
Do you guys have hot dates or something waiting for you at home?
Yes, actually.
Okay, so.
So Ben and David, okay, and I'll vote for them as well, okay?
And then you need to sign this cooperative agreement. Well, I don't know what that is, I haven't even read it.
Yeah.
It has to do with, uh, generator that they have.
Oh, is that the one they got that reduced price?
No, it's given, given to the town. And that we're holding, carrying insurance on it, and that we're doing all this stuff. It's a cooperative agreement that you guys have already signed.
Federal excess property agreement, yeah, I thought we signed that when we got it.
You did?
I think this was, uh.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't think.
I'm not signing nothing.
No.
Okay.
And then the forest ranger will approve.
Yep.
This. And actually, he's the one that approves Ernst as that forest fire warden. After he reviews this stuff with him.
Okay, so, we have two abatements. We are moving into, gosh, we've done all the fun stuff. Thirty-one Stores Hill, Gandon, and three forty-six Ford Road Green. I believe we have the thirty-one Stores Hill Lane, the assessed value of this property is one million three hundred and fourteen thousand four hundred dollars. And the taxpayers filed for an abatement, they believe the value assessed is disproportionate to other properties in the area. Our recommended, uh, assessor is Grant.
Well, but.
It, he's completed an inspection of the property and made some changes on the listing data. The property had been adjusted for having two dwellings on it, when the understanding was that the second building would be converted to an agricultural building. The adjustment for the multiple dwellings on the land was removed. The appallants cite two properties to compare to theirs, however, they did not provide an appraisal to support their stated value. They stated that they think the value should be a million dollars. So the revised assessment recommended by our assessor is one million two hundred and forty-seven thousand one hundred dollars. An assessment change of sixty-seven thousand three hundred dollars. What do we wish to do with this?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Thank you, all those in favor say aye.
Ben aye.
David aye.
And Judy aye, okay, so that's approved as recommended.
There's two green tabs to sign, please.
Okay.
The DRA says you have to sign the actual abatement form, not just Todd's memo and stuff.
Okay.
I mean, it's worth noting on this assessment that the taxpayer was asking for a reduction in value of about three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, and our assessor recommended an assessment change of sixty-seven thousand, so relatively modest compared to what the taxpayer was requesting.
Right, yep. But, but, what do you think that out, thank you. Our next request for an abatement is for Catherine Green on three forty-six Ford Road. She has an assessed value of three hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars. She did not give an opinion of what she thought the assessment should be. Uh, our assessor is recommending granting an abatement. He completed an inspection of the property and noted that several of the outbuildings should be changed to thirty percent good due to the condition they are in. So the revised assessment is three hundred and twenty-eight thousand one hundred dollars, which is an assessment change of twenty-four thousand four hundred dollars. The taxpayer did not give a value of opinion. What do we wish to do with this one?
I'll move it, I'll second.
Thank you, Ben, thank you, David, all those in favor say aye.
David aye.
Ben aye.
And Judy aye. And now we have.
Dina, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Dina, do we have the, the, um, the CSA to sign too, now that we've moved it? Or have we already signed?
And Judy's, you moved it, and Judy's gonna sign it.
Okay, Judy's gonna sign, that's right, okay, I'm sorry, I'm losing track.
I'm sorry.
Oh, the community.
Yeah, I'll move for you to sign it, right.
Yep. So. Next up, we have a report of wood cut, thank you. Spenn James, about twenty-nine Baker Hill Road, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and ten cents.
I'll move it, second, Ben aye, David aye.
Judy aye. Um, wood cut. Two, 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 two. Eighty-two ten. And that's approved, and then. We've got, um, two and tents to cut. One for George Toller and one for Richard Mengi. And Ben usually digs a gander at those.
Yeah, they look hard.
Okay, I'll move them. Toller and. Toller and Mengi.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Ben, I.
David, I.
And Judy, I, those are approved. Okay.
No stickies on those.
We were going to have, um, a barn easement inspection following this meeting, but that is being changed probably to the next meeting.
Yes.
So it's at twenty-five Market Street, for anyone that's interested, I'm not sure that all of the public would be welcome there, but the select board will go and take a look and make sure it qualifies for a barn easement. And.
Those intent to wood cuts, um, we really don't have much to say about them, but it's important to get them signed, because the contractors are needing to get going on.
That time of year.
Yeah, well, we can, if we don't sign them, we're holding them up. It comes down to that, but there's, there's.
Well, sometimes not.
No.
Well, sometimes they'll do what they want to do, but for the most part, they're championing it to get it signed.
After fourteen days, they can just go in.
And if we denied one of them or something like it, we'd, we'd really have to have cost. And it's pretty hard to have cost without.
Doesn't sound like anybody's clear-cutting a major piece of forest.
Well, there's, there's a state, uh, forest warden who oversees the cuts, that makes sure that best man of, management practices are followed, and, and so it's not like it's without oversight after that.
Good.
Okay, good, thank you.
They show up on the job, and they post it, they've been there.
June thirteenth.
Okay. Thank you. We have a, a recommendation from David Robbins, our planning and zoning administrator, for an appointment, the, the select board appoints members of the zoning board.
When we do that one, and I'll.
Okay.
Pretends to reputation.
I believe that's a great idea. And then, I believe, we've already, we're gonna take up the demerger request next time, after we have a chance to really get into it. But, Dina.
Ooh.
I am gonna be out of town on six thirty, so I wonder if we could move that meeting to the day before, which would be a Wednesday, six twenty-nine.
When is the next meeting?
The thirteenth.
June thirteenth.
June thirteenth, then June twenty-seventh. So you're gone on the twenty-seventh, you said.
Dina is gonna hate me for this suggestion, but I'll make it anyways.
I'm sorry.
On, on most of the other boards where I serve, someone is in charge of sending out calendar invitations, and those just automatically populate into your calendar, if you're using Apple Calendar, or Outlook, or any of the sort of modern software. I know that you don't use Outlook, so we'd have to get some sort of software for you to be able to do that, but that would be so helpful for you to just be able to send out an invitation, and have it pop up in our calendars, as opposed to having to keep track of it and write it down.
Every day, yeah.
Yeah, but can't you guys do that in your own calendars? I mean, that's what I do.
Yeah, yeah, but there's only.
Just go in and you go every other week, and.
Yeah, sure, you could do that, but then they end up moving it around, and stuff changes, whereas.
I just wait for this flood of stuff from Dina shows up, and I go, oh.
Got a meeting?
No, but that usually is three days before the meeting.
Well, that's fine, I mean.
Well, yeah, you might have other stuff, I, I, I just think it'd be nice if there was a way for the, the select board assistant, uh, administrator to be able to send out invitations in advance, so that we don't have to keep track of it ourselves. Basically pushing work off of my desk on to Dina's.
Uh, to Dina's. Heaven only knows, she doesn't have enough to do.
I'll try to figure out how to do that.
I think Jordan is pretty good with computers, that might be a nice little.
I'll ask her, she can teach me how, but then that's one more thing that I have to remember to ask somebody else to do, and that's harder for me then, reminding to do it myself.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
Sorry, Dina.
Now, you're having a cranky day.
Well, I am having a tad bit of a crank here, but I'll get over it.
Where'd you, where'd I catch those fish? That's a pretty nice stricker.
First Connecticut Lake.
Wow.
Yeah, it was great, we had a really good time this year, it was good fishing.
Who was Santa Claus?
I don't know where my, so the twenty-seventh is a Thursday, I'm asking for it to be moved to.
I didn't want to get a ride out either, that's all.
I will, uh, I'll repeat that later. Ben, you wanted to update us on the cutting of the trees?
Why don't we do the meeting dates, which you brought.
Oh, okay, okay. So Thursday, June twenty-seventh, I'm out of town. So I'm suggesting Wednesday, June twenty-sixth.
That works for me.
Oh, good. Oh, great, thank you, and I apologize for that. Can be helped.
You doing anything good?
Well, yeah, um.
She thinks so.
Yeah, my daughter and her husband are taking a little vacation with his mother, and I'm going up to babysit the puppy, the chicks, the turkey chicks, and the meat birds. Anyone that's welcome to come along and help with the menagerie. So I will be taking my coffee maker with me, 'cause I'll be meeting it. As I run around, let everybody out, then corral them at the end of the day. And her puppy apparently really likes the chicks, so there's a lot of watching to be done. And I do apologize for that, but.
No worries.
Yes.
Life happens.
Who knew that my grandchildren would be feathered?
At least they don't talk back to you. They're not fresh.
Not, not too often. Okay, we are looking for an update from Ben, um, on the cutting of trees.
Alright, uh, there's a few things she wanted, and I, I, she wanted to know which, um, school board member would be the best to talk to. She's concerned about the renovation of a school, and the removal of lead paints and asbestos, and where they're gonna store them on site, whether they're gonna be in a dumpster on her property line, they're gonna be. So, so I can give a suggestion to me, which, because I don't know anything about school board members, and I'll relay that to her. But on the cutting of trees, uh, she said she would work with them, but the last time they did it, Ashplum came and, came on to her, not only cut all the trees, but came on to her property and cut trees on her property, and really inflamed the situation. Then they paid them for the damages, like forty-eight dollars for the damage they did to the trees. But she would, uh, work with them, um, to cut the trees that are going into power lines.
Work with the electric company?
The electric company, yes. But she just wanted to make sure that it was clear, and what they wanted to cut, and they, I'll, I'll get back in touch with her and reconfirm that.
Thank you very much for handling that, I think that had a better result than, uh, muscling in and doing it, and then really inflaming the situation.
But I, from what she explained, I mean, anybody would, would have been upset with what they did, because it was a young crew, is what their excuse was, and they didn't, weren't aware of property lines and stuff like that, and they really, they came across the fence, and were cutting stuff on, on her property.
And which I think they can do only if the branches are in the lines, but.
That's not what they did, they did more than that, and they did pay her.
Yeah, forty-eight dollars.
For damages, or something like that, but, um, that's why she would.
Adding insult to injury.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Those guys at Ashplum sometimes are a little aggressive.
Well, they're there to cut trees.
Any tree cutters, people, a lot of people think they're aggressive.
You know, one of our, one of my direct neighbors gave them permission to cut some trees, and they came in and did that, and then two days later, came out and they had these bags of, um, um, I don't know, what do you call it, the stuff that kills plants, that they were gonna spread out all over the ground, and she, they never asked permission to put, uh, you know, Agent Orange on the ground. She, she had to fit and, and chase them away, but I think sometimes they kinda do what they want, and figure it's better to ask for forgiveness than permission.
Yeah. Well, that's a good outcome, thank you, Ben.
I move we give Ben another.
Well, you got the real medal.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's true, you too.
Yes, I, I actually looked back at my notes, and, um, it looked like originally, the power company was looking for something in the vicinity of eighty thousand dollar rebate off of their, or production off of their assessment, and then we would owe them from the taxes they paid. And we settled at mediation for twenty thousand. So, um.
And she had one more thing, um, the tree, the lended tree, she was gonna have, wanted to have tested, she sent you a copy of that email. I didn't understand what the testing was, but they're just gonna correct.
Well, they don't really test, right, they go, yeah, but, um, I have to go and, I have to see what's left in that account.
Well, you'll respond to her.
She usually.
I didn't have a problem, what she described as the testing, I didn't, I didn't.
Oh, okay.
I didn't know what testing meant.
So it's just a poor sample.
And they decide what should be trimmed and what shouldn't.
Okay, so, um.
And I, I can talk very easily on these kinds of topics, if you'd listen to me.
That would be very awesome, you've got, we appoint you to that position.
We're done, it's like we're non-public.
Non-public, yes, and so I remove that we go into non-public, wow, screaming through this one. We need a second for the non-public.
I'll second.
Thank you, sir, thank you, David.
Please, non-public.
We are filling in under reputation, which I believe is a C. We thank you all.
Thanks for coming in.
And.
Kinda rich, you keep bringing in those two cameras, you make me worry.
Well, I don't, I don't know.
Either you're getting indecisive in your.